I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:03 PM. We'll now take a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind Board members to turn on your microphones and speak into them. Will the Coordinator please call the roll?
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scavano?
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Dr. Harner?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Danielle Gross, who is working with us on the audiovisual. She goes to Jefferson High School. And thank you for being here and helping us out tonight. Now we'll recognize, yay. Now's the time we'll recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Dotson, would you like to present, please?
Good evening, and thank you. Nearly twenty students from the Rockford Public Schools Special Olympics team participated at the Special Olympics State Summer Games in June at Illinois State University. Lee Washington took first place in the running long jump, and he also took first place in the four-by-100-meter relay, along with Jose Reyes, Mario Salas, and Silas Johnson. There were several other athletes who placed at the state level. The RPS team has about seventy students representing eighteen schools. Students qualified for state if they earned a gold medal at the 2014 Northwestern Illinois Special Olympics Spring Games at Harlem High School in May. At the Harlem Games, Coach Linda Kimble told the registered star, "The team focuses on doing their best and trying to build a team." These athletes work hard and celebrate their achievements as a team, regardless of their finish. This school year marks the twelfth year for the team. Thank you to Coach Linda Kimble and the numerous volunteers and helpers who make this program possible for RPS students. Please join me in congratulating these wonderful student athletes. Congratulations. 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 Thanks for everything. This is great. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. We're now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting, where we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the right of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of thirty minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you will be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. Since there are more than fifteen... It is not appropriate to address individual more members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at a time, the one whose turn it is to speak, and the person who will speak next. When you are the second person, please come to the front and sit in the vacant chair. That way, we'll be able to devote the maximum amount of time to public comment. Could you please press the... Well, could you please push the mic, though? I also want to point out the two-minute clock that is on the wall where the windows are.
Anyway, I'll start with a quote. 1920 H.G.
One shows the total time allotted to public comment, and one shows the total time for
Wells, "Success at every level of education obviously depends on what goes before.
each speaker. We only have three speakers tonight, so you'll just be interested in the two-minute on
At Rock Valley College, a math teacher told me, 'There are more classrooms dedicated
the right. Our first speaker tonight is Kate Schnell, and Allison Wang will follow.
to remedial math than to credited college-level courses.' There are ten to twelve sessions of remedial reading. I talked to other professors who says, 'Your kids can't read. They can't write.'" Is it Rock Valley's job to remediate what we failed to do in 2005? You know, I heard this over and over. It really never hit me until this year. Success at every level. Middle schools, I mean, high schools blame the middle schools, and middle schools blame the elementary. Elementary, we all blame the parents. I say, "Let's deal with what the cards we've been given. Let's figure it out. We have children in poverty. We have parents that don't read to their kids. Let's deal with the problem that we have." And here's the data. Here's what really woke me up to this. I called up Boylan. I asked the athletic director there, "How many of your kids are going to four-year colleges have been recruited and go?" Thirteen. These are four-year colleges that they're getting scholarships to go play in. We have four in our school district, our entire... We have seven thousand students. They have between a thousand and twelve hundred students. And granted, I know what you're thinking. "Oh, they're all white kids. They're all parents. They're all parents that read to their kids." Well, I don't care. We need to figure out what we can do between K and third grade, because after that, our kids get lost, and they hate reading, and it's a chore for them. So I'll see you guys in two weeks, and we'll talk about some great ideas. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Schnell. Allison Wang, followed by Colleen McGee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, again. So today, I would like to say a few words about what has come to my mind over the past few recent events and of what was covered in the media. We all know that time passes. Public opinion changes. Laws change, too. Certain practices were acceptable before, but for some very good reasons, they are no longer acceptable. For example, smoking. Another example, ethics standards for government officials, such as the Virginia Governor Bob McDonald, who was recently convicted for influence peddling. So, the Electoral Interference Prohibition Act and the State Officials and Employees Ethics Act, or just more commonly known as the Ethics Act, bars school district administrations from participating in political action to advocate for or against a referendum. According to the Ethics Act, a state or school may publish an article in the district newsletter or website or any kind of media about a referendum, but their wardings must be carefully worded to avoid the appearance of promotion. Please just keep this in mind in the future. These are just my humble opinions, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. And our final speaker tonight is Ms. Colleen McGee, whose daughter does an incredible job with robotics in this town.
I want to speak tonight, kind of a follow-up, along with what Kate was saying, about lost opportunities related to poor reading skills. And again, as she and I have looked at some of the things that go on with kids that graduate, as a district, our ACT reading scores are poor. And more than that, I guess what really bothered me about it was that not only are kids not good readers, they're not having the joy of reading. You know, granted, when I was a kid, we didn't have all the opportunities kids have nowadays, but I can remember how much I loved reading, loved going to the library and loved reading. And it seems like for so many young kids nowadays, it's a chore. It's not a joy. So I decided to do some research, and one of the things I found was that when you teach a child to read is just as important as how you teach a child to read. And the later a child learns to read, not only are they not as good at it, but they also don't enjoy it. They've kind of lost that opportunity to see joy in reading. And that really, those early years, preschool, K-1, 2, is when we really need to devote our time to reading. So what can we do to help kids learn how to read at a younger age? I think this district has certainly done some things. We've beefed up the early childhood education, and hopefully, we'll get more and more numbers of kids into early childhood education. We've got volunteers coming into the schools to help some of the little kids read. We've got that iRead program going on. So we are doing a lot of things, but I think there's more that we can do. And now is the time to think about doing, because now we've got new facilities that are going to be coming in in the next couple of years. So along with Kate, I'll be back next time and talk about some more of the ideas. Two minutes kind of limits your opportunities to talk about the research, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Are there any Board member comments? Mr. Connor?
Yep. I want to give a shout-out to the IT department. I've been talking with a number of teachers, and I think the improvements that have come in over the last year have really helped. There was a lot of construction, a lot of delays because of the construction, but I'm getting a lot of good feedback and really want to give a shout-out to the both extra staff, the staff that's in the schools on the IT side, and especially the help desk function. So really good work to the IT department.
I see no other lights on, so we'll move to the consent portion of our agenda, which includes the following consent items. A, meeting minutes from 8:26:14. B, payroll. C, accounts payable. D, purchase orders. E, contracts under $10,000. F, air travel. Also, bid recommendations. A, RFP number 1458, Physical Security and Vulnerability Services, and B, IFB 1503, the Lincoln Middle School Window Replacement Project. We also have recurring contracts. A, Rockford Arts Infusion Grant Recurring Contract for Evaluation, and B, the Recurring Contract with the Rockford Area Arts Council. Other consent items include A, the Black Healthcare In-Kind Contribution Facility Waiver, B, the Rudy Valdez In-Kind Contribution Facility Waiver, and C, the Freedom of Information Act law. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Connor, and second by Dr. Harner. Are there any consent items Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Okay. Dr. Harner?
9A.
And Ms. Jackson?
8A, 8B, 9B, 10A, 10B.
And are any of those to be considered together?
They can.
The whole group?
You can consider all of eight. I guess the ones that I pulled, you could consider those together.
Okay. Thank you. And I have 9A from Dr. Harner. And what, Mr. Rollins?
Well, I'd want it 8A separately.
Okay. Will do. Seeing no other lights, let's go ahead and call the roll on the approval of consent items not pulled.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
With six yeses, one absent, the motion passes.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and take these in numerical order, so we'll start with 8A. And is there a motion and a second to approve 8A?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Harner and Dr. Harner, seconds. And is there discussion, questions? Mr. Rollins?
This did actually come through the Operations Committee last week, although we had an Operations Committee the day after the Labor Day weekend, and we had gotten the packet the Friday before Labor Day weekend, so I'm not sure how much time anyone had spent looking at it. So I guess I want to express some concerns and then just ask the administration for a statement in support of their recommendation. This has to do with an RFP that was sent out for Physical Security and Vulnerability Survey Services. At the Operations Committee, we were told about the top five offerers or proposers, and there's an extremely wide variance in the pricing among the various offerers. The number-two offerer was bidding or proposing at $92,780. The company that came in at number-one, E.L.O.R.D. and Associates, came in at $219,040, which is a difference of $126,260. The company that was ranked number-three actually came in at $386,000, which is a variance of $293,000. My concern is, number-one, when I see people proposing that great of a variance, I have a concern about how clear we've been with our specifications, because it looks to me like people are submitting offers based on completely different scopes of work. And when that happens, then I think it's easier for us to kind of direct the contract to wherever we want to direct it by picking and choosing what we think is important, which I think is the second concern that I have. And obviously, the third concern that I have is we're talking about issuing a contract to a company that's $126,000 higher than the number-two offerer. And we did get the today, because I'd asked for them over the weekend, we got today the sort of ratings, score sheets for the offerer, and the rating, the ultimate rating, after taking into account the price difference between the two, is seven points out of 350 points. Now, I will say, that's a little bit skewed, because that's after taking into account the cost difference. It looked like on the technical evaluation, there was about a 33-point difference on a 250-point scale. So, you know, we're talking more and more about, you know, our cost limits, the things that we can't do because we don't have the money, and I just, I guess I'm looking for somebody from the administration to straight-up say that they think that it's worth $126,260 more to hire the number-one offerer instead of the number-two offerer, and that that money isn't spent better elsewhere in the district.
I think I can answer your question. Mr. Rollins, when we set out to do this, we had very specific guidelines of what we wanted to accomplish. We wanted a physical security assessment of the buildings, the physical structure of the buildings, the exterior of the buildings, the lighting, the windows, our policies, our procedures, and that's the way the bids or the request for proposals went out. And we did get a variance. I would agree that there were some people that looked at something totally different, and other people that stuck to the actual bid proposal that we submitted. When we went in and did the interviews, there were several things that struck me about E.L.O.R.D. and Associates. Number-one, I brought their bid proposal with me, so this way you could see, and I'll be glad to show this to you. This, several pages of all the school districts, they've worked with doing these types of projects. Secondly, their project management was, quite honestly, the best that we saw out of all the five that we interviewed. The one thing that really struck me was the physical security expert in the field is a gentleman named Paul Timm. He's with Rita Security. I've been to several of his seminars. I'm very familiar with his work. The state hosts him a lot to go ahead and teach the school districts on how to set up their emergency plans, their physical security structures, what to look for, different things, best practice, emerging practice. And I felt like I was sitting in the room with Paul Timm as we were doing the interview. So Paul Timm... sort of ratings, score sheets for the offer. And the rating, the ultimate rating, after taking into account the price difference between the two, is seven points out of 350 points. Now, I will say that's a little bit skewed because that's after taking into account the cost difference. It looked like on the technical evaluation, there was about a 33-point difference on a 250-point scale. So, you know, we're talking more and more about, you know, our cost limits, the things that we can't do because we don't have the money. And I just, I guess I'm looking for somebody from the administration to straight up say that they think that it's worth $126,260 more to hire the number one offerer instead of the number two offerer, and that that money isn't spent better elsewhere in the district.
I think I can answer your question. Mr. Rollins, when we set out to do this, we had very specific guidelines of what we wanted to accomplish. We wanted a physical security assessment of the buildings, the physical structure of the buildings, the exterior of the buildings, the lighting, the windows, our policies, our procedures. And that's the way the bids or the request for proposals went out. And we did get a variance. I would agree that there were some people that looked at something totally different and other people that stuck to the actual bid proposal that we submitted. When we went in and did the interviews, there were several things that struck me about E.L.R.T. and Associates. Number one, I brought their bid proposal with me, so this way you could see. And I'll be glad to show this to you. This, several pages of all the school districts, they've worked with doing these types of projects. Secondly, their project management was, quite honestly, the best that we saw out of all the five that we interviewed. The one thing that really struck me was the physical security expert in the field is a gentleman named Paul Timm. He's with Rita Security. I've been to several of his seminars. I'm very familiar with his work. The state hosts him a lot to go ahead and teach the school districts on how to set up their emergency plans, their physical security structures, what to look for, different things, best practice, emerging practice. And I felt like I was sitting in the room with Paul Timm as we were doing the interview. So Paul Timm was asked to bid this and did not, but E.L.R.T., literally, in talking to them, I felt like I was talking to the subject matter expert. When I did the background checks, I Googled them. They had several projects in the work. I think they were working on one of the NFL stadiums, in a variety of other things. It was all positive information. The other thing, and I think this is probably what really struck us the most, is the fact that they took time to literally visit a building before they ever stepped in the door so they could come in and say, okay, we went to this building, we were there at this time, we did A, B, and C, and here's what we saw. Nobody else did that. I've seen several of their reports. I think they're very detailed. We did have some other physical security surveys done by another company a couple of years ago under a different grant provided by the Justice Administration. I think they're in line with that. There's no doubt that the expertise of their staff, and I'll be glad to show you the proposal document, is there. I'm very, very satisfied, as well as the other members of the committee that were put together. When we were done with the process, it was a hands-down, everybody was in agreement that this company was the best company to pursue for this.
What was, Mr. Rollins, I'm sorry, what was the recommendation of the Ops Committee?
The Ops Committee recommended approval of this contract.
And are you making any sort of amendment or motion?
No, I was asking questions.
Just questions, thank you. Ms. Jackson, you had your light on. Did you have a question as well?
So let me ask this. You said they were expected to do a physical assessment of the building?
Correct.
And so one of the questions that I asked at Operations was, wasn't part of the RFP, so when were they expected to do a physical assessment? Because it wasn't mandatory. When was that?
Well, what I want to describe is, when I say a physical assessment, what that means is they're supposed to visit the building and conduct a vulnerability assessment based on several key factors. There's an organization called the American Society for Industrial Security. They have very specific guidelines on their assessments, and that was one of the criteria that we put into that. E.L.R.T. is very familiar with that. As a matter of fact, they've written a book for this particular society. So again, their expertise comes through on this. There are standards out there that exist that they will follow, and I can make available to you the other two surveys we had done in the past from another company. It's very specific. It's very targeted. There are very, there are niche items we want looked at, and we know exactly what they are.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, was the expectation that each bidder would do a physical assessment of the buildings?
Before or after the bid?
I'm asking you before. Was that the expectation?
Okay, no. That was not, no. That was above and beyond.
That was above and beyond.
Correct.
Okay, at Operations, we were also told that they did previous work with the district. What work did they do?
I think Mr. Willard is in the audience. He's been on several of the committees with the district. As far as E.L.R.T. doing...
I'm sorry, who was Mr. Willard?
Mr. Willard is one of the people for E.L.R.T.
Oh, okay.
Okay, he's also a community member. He's been on several boards, and I'm sure he'd be glad to tell you what it is if you needed it done. Would you like?
Yes, if you can tell me what work they've previously done for the district.
Hi, I'm Eric Willard. Have been formerly Vice President of Ellerton Associates in the 90s and then moved back here to Rockford in about 2001 because our oldest child had our first granddaughter. Now, that's not directly related to security, but that's what got me back in town. And I have been the Chief Technology Officer for Palatine Belvedere and retired from Carpentersville School District in that role. Having lived in Rockford in the technology arena, one of the things we began years ago was a fiber ring throughout Rockford. And so as a community activist, person interested in making sure that we have technology in common, sharing the costs amongst various organizations in the community, I have served in roles on getting technology infrastructure put around the community, of which the school district and the city and the county were all involved. Additionally, when it came time to do facility studies, I volunteered with the architects and the other team members to take the checklist out and go to various schools and develop a checklist of what was in the buildings so that we could prepare the long-term facilities plan for the district. And so I guess those are some of the kinds of things I've done in the district. E.L.R.T. and Associates, we dug through our files because most of us know that somewhere in the past, but it could have been 20 years to 25 years ago, we did something in Rockford, and we can't find anything on it. So I'm guessing it's lost in history and either before or after, or my interim time when I was with E.L.R.T. So...
So you work for E.L.R.T. and Associates?
That's correct. Now, I am for the last two years since I retired, I am a consultant, full-time consultant with E.L.R.T. and Associates.
Thank you.
So that was long-winded, but yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Connor?
I won't repeat all the information that was given at Operations, but I think it is important. Number one, I agree with Mr. Rollins that roughly $130,000 differential is significant. So from my point of view, there's a couple of things I'd like the public to know. Number one, that one of the main differences we understood was that the second-place bid, although quite a bit less, was really focused only on technology, and that the winning bid, the reason that we accepted that was they have expertise outside of that that you described, whether it's building, policy, procedure. I think the question on the table is, is it worth that much money to have somebody come in from the outside? And one thing that I will say that there's a larger question that I think Mr. Rollins addressed, which is, as we head towards tougher budgets, these are the kinds of decisions that do add up. I think the one thing in favor is there was a comprehensive group that did review it, including the sergeant that is our liaison, and it's up there now. So that's roughly eight folks across various skill sets. And so it wasn't just a small group in that sense, it was across district personnel. But I think the point that Mr. Rollins made that I would underline is that if you want to do this, this is fine. It's your judgment, and I wouldn't question your judgment because I don't have your expertise. However, what I would say is that we're going to have a lot of trade-offs. And I think going forward, as long as the administration is willing to stand behind it and say, we made this decision, and I'll say in this particular case, because it was less expensive to have somebody come in from the outside, which is usually a good thing in terms of safety, but it's more cost-effective to have these folks do it because if we tried to replicate this for us to have the expertise and the time to do it, would be roughly equally expensive. From the corporate side, being in corporate life, that is normally the kind of logic I use on this. But I think what I'm going to say is, I will trust your judgment, but I think these decisions are really going to become harder. And so I would ask to make sure that the deliverables you get out of this are both very specific and is clear to the public when they see the results that it was worth $130,000 differential. And the example that I'll give in this case for everybody is, as we've done the facilities, we have retained outside architectural help and outside help in other areas that are quite expensive. So I think it's just one of those items that we need to think through carefully. And unfortunately, this one is getting picked on because of this differential, but there's many things like this. So I think the point is, we want the public to know that we're looking very carefully at this. There was a lot of work put into this and a lot of trust that this is the right decision. But I think, if you know me, you know I normally don't speak this long at meetings. I think from my point of view, I'm doing that because to me, it's that important to say, we need to be careful about the balance between the cost effectiveness of somebody doing it from the outside and somebody doing it from the inside, and whether that is an objective alternative doing it inside. So that's really not, obviously, a question, but a comment.
Just two things I'd like to point out, and they're up on the board here. I'd like you to call your attention to the second bullet up there. One of the things that E.L.R.T. really shined in with the interview is their expertise with E-Rate. The potential savings in any technology they recommend can tie into E-Rate, which is reimbursable, which is a cost savings down the road. So if we can tie in technology to security and get it compiled on with E-Rate, that's a potential saving. And the other thing is the number of hours spent. We're getting double the amount of hours of this, the number-two bidder. They're providing double the amount of time on the ground, in the buildings, doing security surveys, talking to people, and coming up with a more comprehensive solution. And that's what I'm looking for. Because security is a board priority. We take this very seriously. We want to build this into our five- and 10-year plans. We want this to be a lasting document that provides value to the district, to the public. And we feel that E.L.R.T. has that expertise. It is very obvious with their bid packet and some of the companies, the districts that are represented on here, that's what they do.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McGee. Seeing no other lights on, I'm going to ask the coordinator to call the roll on the approval of RPF number 1458, Physical Security and Vulnerability Services bid.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, and one absent.
I have a group of four that Ms. Jackson gave me and the single one from Dr. Harner, so I'm going to put together the four, which is 8B. And I will take a motion...
You can include mine with hers, that's fine.
Okay. So I would take a motion to approve the following consent agenda items. 8B, the Lincoln Middle School Window Replacement Project. 9A, the Rockford Arts Infusion Grant. 9B, the Recurring Contract with the Rockford Area Arts Council. 10A, the Black Healthcare In Kind Contribution Facility Waiver. And B, 10B, the Rudy Valdez In Kind Contribution Facility Waiver.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Connor and seconded by Mr. Rollins. Is there any discussion on these items? Ms. Jackson?
Can I have an overview of 9A and B? Can we do 9A separately, please?
So I need a motion to amend the motion to exclude 9A.
That's all right. You can do it. So moved by Mr. Connor, seconded by Mr. Rollins. So we need to vote, yes, I was going to say. So we need to call the roll on the amendment to exclude the vote on 9A from this group.
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
All right, we will continue with the conversation about 8B, 9B, 10A, and 10B. And we have, Dr. Wolf is going to speak to the two grants.
So right now, I'm doing the overview of 9B, the Rockford Area Arts Council, or do you want?
9A and B, please.
She would like both, an overview of both. Mr. or Dr. Harner does?
Okay.
That's okay. Since you're up here, would you do both, please?
Okay. So 9A is a required component of the federally funded Rockford Arts Infusion Grant that we do an annual evaluation. We hire an external evaluator. The district has used the College of Medicine, also called the University of Illinois Rockford now. And so the dollar amount in the grant that was funded calls for $20,000. So this evaluation is completely paid for by that federal grant. And we're happy the evaluators who also help us with 21st Century will be conducting this evaluation. And then 9B is, as we were reconciling, two grant pools, Fund 10, some other projects, there were some expenditures that the Rockford Area Arts Council incurred that had not previously been covered by a contract, and so we're asking the board for authority to pay for those expenses.
How much was it?
It's right around $7,400.
Ms. Jackson? Did you have more questions about any of the others that were polled? 8B or 10A or B? Mr. Rollins, I'm sorry.
I don't have questions, but I'll just comment on 8B, which is the IFB for the Lincoln Middle School Window Replacement Project. This also came through Operations Committee. Just want to give a little report on that. We're struggling the most, I think, in our window replacement projects with keeping costs where we're estimating the costs are going to be. This is not an exception. Good news is, we got a little more competition this time. We had been down to two bidders on some of the other projects. We had a total of five bidders on this one. Still came in $250,000 over the administration's pre-bid estimate, although it came in below the architect's pre-bid estimate. So the architect was actually a little bit better at estimating the costs than we were on this one. But it went through the Operations Committee. The Operations Committee recommended approval. And every time we drive down Charles Street, my wife asks me when we're going to replace the windows on Lincoln, so now I can give her an answer.
Okay, I see no other lights on. Thank you for that, Mr. Rollins, and also, Dr. Wolf, thank you for your information. I'm going to ask the coordinator to call the roll on the Lincoln Middle School Replacement and the Recurring Contract with Rockford Area Arts Council, Arts Council, excuse me, and the two in-kind contributions, the Black Healthcare and Rudy Valdez.
I'm sorry, I had questions on 10A and B. That's why I pulled them.
Please go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
So can someone from, I don't know who's going to speak, to those, give an overview of both of those?
For board policy for 10A, the Black Healthcare, they'd like to use our facility at Ellis Arts Academy on September 20th from 6:00 to 3:00 p.m. They're going to do in-kind services for all sorts of dental exams, health exams, x-rays, things of that nature for individual students that come out there and all participants that come in. They're requesting, based on that, that we would do, recommend an in-kind swap in there if you want there for waiving the facility's usage fee.
This event is open to the public? Or is it just RPS 205 students?
I believe this is open to the public. The second one is actually for the Midtown District. On behalf, it was brought to our attention through Rudy Valdez. It's for the First Annual Midtown Ethnic Parade and Festival that'll be down here in the Midtown District. We're looking at, administration's recommendation is for the board to waive the $100 fee for the parking lot, which is a day fee, so they can use the parking lot and the grounds for this parade festival.
Any other discussion on those items? I'm going to ask the coordinator to call the roll on the Lincoln Middle School Window Replacement Project, the Recurring Contract with the Rockford Area Arts Council, and the two in-kind contributions, one for the Black Healthcare and one for the Rudy Valdez.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
And I entertain a motion in a second to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion this time by Mr. Rollins, seconded by... Motion, motion this time by Mr. Rollins, seconded by Mr. Connor, to approve the Rockford Air Arts Infusion Grant recurring contract for evaluation. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask the coordinator to call the roll.
Dr. Harner.
Abstain.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. Powers.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, one abstain, and one absent.
Thank you. We're now at the closed session consent, consent agenda, which includes number 11, A, the HR organizational report and PD report, and number 12, the closed session consent items on student discipline, which are the following CPAs. CPA JCG1 and C, the CPA for EMZ2, and both of those, for both of those students, they've been granted a conditional probation agreement. Is there a motion in a second to approve the closed sent, consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Rollins moves, and Dr. Harner seconds. Are there any items that board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration?
Eleven A.
Eleven A. Mr. Rollins? Oh, did you turn it off? I'm sorry. Anybody else have any that they would like for separate consideration? All right, then we are going to vote on 12, on both CPAs first, but first, yes, that's correct, we're going to vote on CPA, the A and B CPAs, and we'll consider eleven A after that. Please call the roll.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mrs. Powers.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
Dr. Harner.
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one absent.
Thank you. I'll take, entertain a motion for the HR organizational report and PD report.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Harner moves, and Ms. Powers seconds. Thank you. We can have a conversation on that, and so I'm going to ask the coordinator to call the roll.
Mrs. Powers.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
No.
Mr. Rollins.
Abstain.
Mr. Scriv-, or, excuse me, Mrs. McCulloch.
Yes.
Dr. Harner.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Abstain.
The motion passes with three yeses, one no, two abstain, and one absent.
So abstain doesn't count, so we had three yeses and one no, correct? Just so everybody else understands what we're being told up here. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett.
My report will be very brief this evening. I wanted to point out that in your weekly update, we will be mentioning a number of ribbon cuttings that'll be coming up in the next few months, and excited to share some of those improvements in, in a number of our buildings this fall. And with that, I'll defer to the Education Committee and Operation Committee reports. Thank you.
At this time, we will entertain committee reports, and I will give the report on the Education Committee. We met in this room on, well, last night, September 8th, and we had three items on the agenda updates. One was on summer school, which was given by Dr. Travis Wolf, talked about programming for 3,276 students. Eighty of those were early childhood students who hadn't extended school year, and 106 were other special ed students who attended a program at Wilson Aspire, and those were between sixth grade and 21 years old. We heard previously about Camp to the Future, but we did have 1,829 students, K through seventh, in there. For anybody who had, didn't hear previously, the purpose of that program supplements English Language Arts and Mathematics instruction for students in Title I schools who've not met grade level proficiency targets. We had music camp for 57 middle school students in partnership with Rockford Symphony Orchestra and the Mendelson Performing Arts Center. We served 74 students in sixth through 12th grade through the newcomers program, and this is a program for English language, for students who it's their first year in the United States, to fortify their literacy and their numeracy skills. And we also had a program through 20, well, we had six programs through 21st Century Grant, K through 12th graders, and we served 275 students with that. We also had 623 students at Roosevelt for one, two, three, four, five programs. Easiest ones, first, we had 12 students who were doing honors algebra, 56 students who were doing a CAPA freshman seminar, and that was through a grant. We had 143 students taking driver's ed. We had 268 students who were doing credit recovery. There were 15 classes offered, and there was a 94% success rate with those students. The other large program that we had going at Roosevelt was the Step Up Program, and this is a program for our students who aren't successful in eighth grade before they move on to ninth grade, instead of just promoting them, they are identified and invited, and it's actually mandatory for them to attend this program, the Step Up Program. We had, the cost of that, by the way, was $27,000. We had 9% of our eighth graders across the district who were invited to attend, 79% of those did attend, and of those who attended, we had an 80% success rate, we had, which was an improvement from 2013 when we had this program where we only had a six, not only, but we had a 63% success rate. Of the 9% who were invited, 79% attended, and if you don't attend, then you aren't moved automatically into ninth grade. This is one of the requirements. 67% of those who attended are going to stay at Roosevelt in something that we call the Roosevelt Freshman Transitional Program, and 25% of those who attended are going to return to their middle schools. So that was our high school program at Roosevelt. We had a report on, the annual report on the gifted honors and APs classes, and a couple of statistics from that. Our AP enrollment is up 20% this year, and, I'm sorry, last year. I'm going to give you last year's report first. So it was up 20% last year, honors enrollment was up 6% last year, and the AP outcomes from last year, and by outcomes, we refer to students who passed with a three or higher on the test, and the outcomes were up 5%, although the percentage of students who passed or had the three or higher was flat, was pretty flat. So, because we had more students taking the tests, because they were taking the class, we actually had an increase in the number of students who were passing. Last year, we tested third grade students, this is for the gifted program, and we tested using, I think it's called the NAGLIARI, right? We tested 1,300 students. This year, we tested about 2,000 students, and it was, there was some change in the diversity in the students that are coming into the program. We've increased the number of ELL students because the NAGLIARI is a non-verbal test, and we were able to, first of all, we tested more students who are, who are non-English language as their first language, but we also had more of them who scored high enough to be invited into the program. For this fall, which is what I just gave you for the, for the gifted part, I want to tell you that the AP enrollment is up again. It was up 20% last year, and it's up 7% this year, and that we did add some new classes, art history, microeconomics, and human geography. Our honors enrollment is up 21% at the high schools, but it is down 36% at the middle schools. And it was suggested that this could be because the honors science program at the eighth grade level is gone this, this year. We have a full implementation of the nine through 12 Renaissance Academy model, and we have, in our gifted program, in addition to increasing the number of students who are in second, English as their second language, we also have an increased number of students who have IEP plans, so some special ed students. The third report that we had was on the college and career academy pathway development, and as we're planning for the fourth year, so this would be for next year at Jefferson, and that for the third year at Auburn East and Guilford, we have to add additional courses to complete the pathways that were proposed in the fall of 2012. So, using available resources and aligning them to student and community interests, it's anticipated that future course changes will be required as we continue to adapt the pathways, and these courses did go through instructional council. Those courses are, and will be, and will be offered in the 2015-16 school year, Exercise Science II, Fabrication III, Unmanned Aerial Systems, which will be through Emory-Riddle Aeronautical University, Principles of Engineering through Project Lead the Way, Evidence Collection and Preservation, and Introduction to Criminal Justice through UW-Plattville, and Virtual Enterprise International, and that, this course was offered through our entrepreneurship course, and will replace that course in 1516, so it's actually replacing course that we have. There's no fiscal impact to the budget, no additional staff allocations or costs for materials, equipment, and training, although costs for materials, equipment, and training will be incorporated. And the reason there won't be additional staff is because the way that classes are determined is by the number of students who enroll, as to which classes run, and so we'll have the same number of classes. There just may be changes because of the pathways. Before, do any of our board members have questions? I know that's a lot, but there was a lot of good information, and for anybody who wants, this is all under board docs in the library section, under the Education Committee meeting for September 8th. All the documents and powerpoints and information is included there. The, yes, Ms. Jackson?
Did you say the entrepreneurial class was replaced? Is that what you said? With the other classes you named?
No, I said that the Visual Enterprise International was offered through our entrepreneurship course title in this school year, and it will change titles under, next year, it's going to be, it'll be replaced by the Virtual Enterprise International. For anybody who, did, did you want to know what it's about?
No, you said it was delivered on our page. It's correct, we probably got it.
It was delivered. All right. We will meet again, the Education Committee will meet again in this room the first Monday in October, which is October 6th at 5:30 p.m. And that concludes my report. I'll ask Mr. Rollins to please proceed with an Operations Committee report.
Thanks. The Operations Committee met in this room on Tuesday, September 2nd at 5:30 p.m. Couple of things that we talked about, we already have discussed tonight, including the Physical Security and Vulnerability Study, RFP, and the Lincoln Windows. We approved a fiscal year 15 sort of work calendar for the Operations Committee. We've got a report on fiscal year-to-date repairs to buildings scheduled to close. Even though we've made a decision to close some buildings, none of those schools will be closed this year, and we are going to have some capital needs in those buildings while people are in them, so the administration was just making us aware that they will in fact be spending money on those buildings. The amounts were all pretty small, in the low thousands. I think most of them were under $10,000, and it's just, you know, like repairing this here and this there. We got a transportation status report from Mr. Schmidt, just giving us a multi-year report on some statistics for tran-, our transportation. Our number of routes is down from last year. Last year, we had 228, we're down to 221, it looks like. This year, I guess this was as of the la-, end of last year, last fiscal year, Mr. Schmidt? So as of the last, end of the last fiscal year, it was down to 221 routes. Number of students transported is, was 20,331. Average ride time is about 22 minutes. Number of drivers continues to drop. We're at the lowest number of drivers we've been, at least as of the end of last year, in four years, we're down to 254 drivers. Driver hours per day, we're down to 1,315. Lots of interesting statistics, which are available if anybody wants to read through them. We got a facilities master plan, capital life and life safety projects update, including scheduled projects, RFPs that are going to be out on the street, or invitation for bids, upcoming bid packages. Probably the most important was, we got initial proposed schedules for how the administration proposes to schedule the, just the additions and new construction phase of the facilities plan. That was given to us in about three different formats. If the rest of the board members haven't seen that, you should definitely get a hold of that. The committee sort of felt like we hadn't really had time to study it and wanted more time to look at it, so we asked the administration to just give us a month to look at it, and we'll be talking about it again next month. In the meantime, you know, certainly, I would, I would urge the board members to be looking at that information as well, and share any thoughts that you might have with us regarding it. And then, most of the time, was actually taken up by a tax abatement request, and it was a tax abatement request that was brought to us by Winnebago County, having to do with a business that was expanding in one of the industrial parks, and was asking that we abate our real estate taxes for three years. The substantive outcome was that no one made a motion, and that did not move forward past the Operations Committee. I just want to use the opportunity to talk about, I think, maybe some ways we can improve or some things we ought to be thinking about. So this tax abatement request came to us together with a copy of a policy that we have, we actually have a policy on tax abatements, that was last revised in 2002, so it's 12 years old. It hasn't been revised in 12 years, and it has references to a position that doesn't even exist in the district anymore. So, I guess I'm suggesting that we ought to be looking at our policies on a more regular basis and refreshing them to, to see whether or not they really are up to date or whether they need to be updated, and I would suggest that we do that pretty regularly. You know, I would think every single one of our policies, somebody ought to take a look at every five years at, at a minimum. But then also, I mean, the way it came to the Operations Committee, I don't think was all that efficient or really conducive to good discussion, because this seemed to be coming to the Operations Committee from Winnebago County. There was no staff workup, there was no recommendation, there doesn't have to be a recommendation, but we were really kind of left to our own devices, and I would just ask that that not happen again, because really, you just had a bunch, and unfortunately, Mr. Lewis was sick that night. I teased him afterwards about whether he was really sick or whether he was avoiding the tax abatement discussion. But, and he would have been the one probably to answer the questions, but you'd had three board members and four community members who had no clue what was going on really, and with somebody from the county asking us to abate taxes for the school district. And it, it was not an efficient discussion, and at the end of the day, nothing came out of it. So, I would just ask the administration to keep that in mind in the future. Our next Operations Committee meeting is on October 7th at 5:30 p.m. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Ms. Fromm, can you make sure that all the board members receive a copy of that recommendation for staging of the construction for the coming year? Just so everyone's on the same page. Mr. Connor.
I think it, is it appropriate to either make a comment or ask a question from the Operations Committee report?
Absolutely, sure.
Okay. There's two points I'd like to make. First is the schedule from the facilities team, under Mr. Schmidt did a very good job articulating costs and schedule, and one of the points we made is that particularly for teachers and the union to look at that schedule, because this will be important. It was well done, but I have a feeling that there might be feedback from staff on both the timing and the substance of what schools go when. So, adding on to what Mr. Rollins said, I would recommend that folks out on the, out in the buildings, take a good look at it. I think the second thing that I would point out now relates to the tax abatement. If I remember correctly, the way the original policy was worded, I think there was a dependency, I believe, on the city of Rockford doing some preliminary work, which, if I remember correctly, was not done as a part of this. Is that correct?
Well, the way the policy is actually worded is, it requires an economic impact analysis. And the policy says, we can rely on the cities, or we can do our own, but neither one of those two things have been done.
Okay. So I think the point is that, in this particular case, it's really not just a matter of an abstract conversation about a policy. We're being asked, and I think the taxpaying public has to understand that when tax abatements are granted, and not saying that it wasn't for cause in this case because it was related to creating jobs. I think nonetheless, we have to understand it does have an impact. And I think the economic analysis and the preparation needs to be done beforehand so we can understand that. And there was some impact, but not the kind of analysis, I think, that Mr. Rollins is referencing. So that would be one part. And I think the other part is that if you look at the proposal that's being brought to us, one of the unusual parts, and why it's an exception, is that we're being asked to do tax abatement on a project already underway. And it's common practice to ask for these things beforehand, not during it. So I think what I would say to reinforce Mr. Rollins' point is that there's probably a higher bar when this kind of exception is requested. And so, again, I think, and there's probably a coordination effort. And when this was presented to us, it was stated from Winnebago County that the request may have been done earlier, but it took the county a while to do it. So I think there's a coordination issue, and whether we address it through policy or in this particular case, I think the fact is that we need to be clear on the process and what it takes come before the board to have enough information. So that means clarity on our part, the administration's part, and then putting that in a policy. So the one item I'd like to point out for the public is, oftentimes, you hear us bring things to you as a community, and it might seem like these things don't get a lot of attention. And what I'll point out is that the committees is where a lot of the detailed work is done and where a lot of the questions should be done. And I think this is a really good example where if something is brought to us and there are issues, we do bring this out and open, but a lot of this is usually done in committee. So those of you that are interested in details should really plan on attending Education and Operations if you want to know more detail about this. But I'm using this as an example to say, I think it's very important for the transparency to be very clear on all our decisions. And the public is invited to committee, and committees is where a lot of the work is done.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. And those committee meetings are also televised. So if you can't be here, they're on 20. I'm wondering if Ms. Fromm, does, I don't know if the REA already has a copy or if they attended the meeting. I know that it has to be in the operations packet online, but if you would like to also copy the REA leadership, and they can do with that as they would like with their membership. And Dr. Jarrett, you had your light on. Did you want to speak to either of those?
I just wanted to reiterate that we did receive that request on August 26th. And it was kind of an urgent request, and that was, there was not feasibility for us to conduct an economic analysis in that period of time. And so that's, that's why that occurred the way it did. It wasn't a lack of diligence on part of our staff.
And to Mr. Rollins' other point about the policy updates, I know that we've had a lot of policy updates ongoing, but specific to that one is, is, I guess, a board member request? I don't know if we need to put it down in a, in our log or not?
This was a board-driven policy. It's not one that has statutory updates or changes that have impacted the policy. It was one that was driven by the board at the time. Mr. Lewis is taking a look at it now and will make any recommendation, any recommended changes other than changing a title of an individual to the extent that his department believes it's necessary.
Thank you.
Ask a question on that?
Yes, Ms. Jackson?
So as long as we're talking about it, I think we recognize that some things are statute-driven. Is there any kind of standard, legal or in standard practice whereby things, and in this case, we have a position that's no longer there? So does that kind of condition, I don't want to say void that policy, but is there any sort of complications with policies being out of date, either by, if you will, fact or intent on those policies?
This one, because it's not an issue that comes up regularly. It's just not a policy that has been reviewed regularly. And most of them, for example, the ones where we have had over the years a number of title changes for positions, we've now changed the policies. So for example, they would say the head of HR versus giving a particular title. So that's something that, you know, as titles change, we try to be more broad or vague about the particular position.
I think the tenor of the question, though, is, is there any impact to the fact that some of these aren't up to date? So in this case, was there anything, you know, we would have any liability based on the wording or lack of a process supporting?
No.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to our action items. We have one action item for tonight, and that is the Linda Long Consulting Agreement. Is there a motion and second to approve the Linda Long Consulting Agreement?
So moved.
Mr. Rollins moves and Mr. Connor seconds. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the coordinator to call the roll.
Ms. Jackson? No. Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
One no and one absent.
Thank you. We do not have any new or other business, so I would ask board members, we don't have any on our agenda, so I would ask board members if they have any other new business items or agenda recommendations, and I believe Ms. Powers does.
Yes, I do. Could somebody speak to the Facilities Committee? And what the timeline is, where they can get applications, what board members are going to be on it? What, any update on that?
So Mr. Scrivano, President Scrivano is in charge of that committee. And I know that he sent an email out to board members identifying the, what people will be asked to fill out to apply their application. And I don't believe, Ms. Fromm, was there a timeline on that? And has it been, Mr. Dotson, has it been posted on the website? Perhaps you could speak to that. I'm hoping that he's been in communication with you.
Yes, it is posted on the website. I believe it's on the board member page. The application is.
So the application is on the board member page of the RPS 205. So people have to drill down to that. Is there any way to make it?
Or you can always contact Mrs. Fromm, who can certainly collect those and get them to the board president.
And do you know, since it's on there, do we have a timeline for, we're accepting them through?
I'm unaware of that.
The deadline is September 19th. And then I know that Mr. Scrivano with the Chair of the Committee will be then reviewing those to determine membership. And I don't remember, because it's in, it's in the, what we posted. Did it also say that the two board members will participate in that selection process?
It didn't say that, but it did say there's, he is proposing a special board meeting to essentially answer the questions, I think, Mrs. Powers raised, which is, what does the makeup of the committee, what will its goals be, et cetera? I think the, that, there's only two items on that special meeting, and that's one of them.
Okay. And that meeting, the only date that was sent out to all of us was September 30th? I don't know if everybody has responded or not?
As of his last email, he'd only had two responses, so, yeah.
So I'm sure he'll let us know so that we can adjust our schedules accordingly. And he had asked us for, was that for 5:00 PM, Ms. Fromm, on the 30th?
Yes.
Okay. So if people would respond to Mr. Scrivano, that would be helpful. And that would be a special meeting on Tuesday, September 30th, and it would begin enclosed and then move into open. Okay. Is there, that's what his email said? So that's how the agenda items marked out. Is there, are there any other recommendations, new business? If there's no further's business, I'll take a motion and a second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Jackson and second by Ms. Powers, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. I'm, any opposed? Same sign? Good night. Thank you. And thank you again for your help, Danielle.